It is July the 3rd at about, well, we'll call it 6 o'clock, 6:02. We'll go ahead and start the council meeting. I will go ahead and give the fair, I'll just stay right here if that's okay. Our Father in Heaven has become the Lord this time. We are so thankful for the former governments of Dallas. Help us to bring together. And we're thankful for being part of Pace and City and for the abilities that we have of governing ourselves. We ask you to please watch over and bless us that as we make these decisions for the citizens of Pace and that we may do so with real intent and that they will be fruitful. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hyatt. We'll go on to the consent agenda. If I give my last round, I'll read it. Consent agenda, number one, approval of the June 19th, 2019 work session and city council meeting, resolution, deferral agreement for the St. Peter and Paul Orthodox Church, and resolution, ratification of the Central Utah Water Agreement. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion made. It's been seconded. Roll call votes starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We'll move on to see petitions, public forum. Anyone can speak on the out of the knowledge agenda. Time limit is three minutes, hopefully less if you can, and we'll go to that point. Open the public forum. Not seeing anybody that would like to take advantage of the public forum. We'll go ahead and move on towards the public forum. We'll go, well, as part of the public petitions, we'll go to number two, staff reports. Any staff that would like to come on?
Mayor's, the council members, public. That's true, that's true. Our end report for June is as follows. We had 120 arrests, 262 offenses, 161 citations, 217 violations, 1,197 calls for services, three DUIs, 338 traffic stops, and 27 traffic accidents. We just helped with the Salem Bike, not bake, so, a bike race on the 27th, 28th, and it went really well. We also helped with the, the, ran down the veterans home, but it turned out really nice and had a good attendance down there. So, we thank those two entities for inviting us to help them and it went really well. We're just gearing up for the next two months. It's gonna, it's busy, I guess next three months is kind of our busy time, so, that's what we're preparing for now. So, if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'll see you now. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
You got the gun, you go ahead. You've always been a better looking guy, always been. Mayor, council, I just wanted to give you an update up at the golf course. I just ran the reports before I came down. I thought it was interesting because we've had, I guess, the second wet spring on, in history, but I did run the reports from last year and in June this year, we're up $15,670. And from January 2018, I ran that report to today and this year, and in total, we're up $33,853. So, I think we're on a good trend, you know? I think monthly, we're up about 15 percent. I think we probably would have pissed that without the bad weather. So, we're, we're seeing a nice trend there. On the parks end, there's not a lot going on. We're getting ready for the Scottish Festival next week, so, we're excited to have that get back going. Any questions? Thank you.
Any other staff? No, we'll go ahead and move on to the council reports. Just one thing I forgot is we're having our golf event for people that were trying to recruit the Pace and businesses and dignitaries. It's on October 2nd, 2019, and one thing we're doing, we're trying to have is like spouses that don't golf or people don't golf. So, we're having some other things going on. One of the things we're gonna do is have helicopter rides and we have a painter that's gonna teach how to paint. So, I, just for the council and the mayor, I'll give you a few of these that if you know people or you think that we ought to be recruiting the Pace and that, let's do that. And I hope everybody has a great Fourth of July.
I just was wondering, Tracy, I don't know if you've heard from Carl when they're gonna paint the pickleball courts?
First, first, what I've heard is the first part of August. They're still in the drying period of the, the thing and, yeah, and so, but there's gonna, they're gonna paint it and then I thought it was just the 6th or 7th of August was gonna be the ribbon cutting. So, I know you've been taking lessons.
What, what is the drying cycle for what?
Well, it's for the, for the concrete because it's not suspended, but it's tensioned, right Travis? You're the engineer in the room, so, because they tension it, it's, it's not, it takes longer to dry.
Oh.
And so, they, they wait for that to totally dry and then they put the surface on so it doesn't crack.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it looks really good and you want to get out on those courts now, but we got just about another month.
Yeah. I was wondering, a lot of people ask.
Yeah.
Last time I talked to 2-2, it, it, as you mentioned, August, I, I thought he was going to get it open just before the salmon supper, so it, it may be.
Yeah, that might be.
Other than that, I'm just concerned with the amount of weeds that are all over the intersections. I've got two fire hydrants that are completely covered with weeds in my neighborhood. You can't even see them. And, I mean, I know they're there, but they are completely covered and I'm concerned about that. And I believe that's all. Thank you.
Okay, and this has maybe some bearing on, on your concern and I've talked to you a little bit about it. There is a, a resource that we have at Young Living down in Mona. Just, yes, well, today, I think, was the 3rd, they were going to, there's a group of about 20 of those employees. There's some incentive for them to come, go out and do projects. They're willing to come out and do it. They'll work in about four-hour segments of 20 people and they've started to take care of the rose garden on the north side of the tee. They're gonna come back on the 5th and finish that. And the contact I have is my niece's husband, Jesus Vasquez, and they're willing to, to come back as many times as they, as we need them and I think that'd be a good thing.
Are they the ones that did it to the pool down below the skate park?
I'm not sure.
I stopped and thanked two young men and the older guy that takes care of the chairs and everything, and he retired.
Oh, yeah.
Milt.
Milt.
Milt's daughter. All three of them were up there and had been working pulling weeds. And they left and went to their other duties at the pool and she told me she was gonna come back and somebody pulled them off. Now, whether it was a concerned citizen or, it could have been, I had threatened, Dave and I had, so, anyway, it wasn't me, but I appreciate those that have done it. So, thanks.
That's great. And this, this group of 20 can, can, they're willing to come back. I think that's a good resource. Also, it's kind of self-serving here as one of the promoters of the Western Heritage Night. Would like to let everybody know that that's gonna be on the 13th. As the Scottish Festival started to go down, we'll start at 7 o'clock. We have two great singers, capability of having a dinner and a concert or just the concert. That will be on 13th of July. Dave Stamey is the headliner and Trinity Sealy is, is going to be assisting with that. So, just would like to let everybody know about that. And I've talked to you a little bit about it as well. Okay?
I have no concerns.
Okay, good. Then we'll move on. Scalp, there is no scalps that I can see and I didn't have any that were made in my file. Andrew, the chamber business, would you like to talk to us?
Good evening. Yes, it is louder than normal. Good evening, I'm here representing the chamber tonight. Yes, we did get the Western Heritage posted on there today, but Facebook, as everyone knows, today had major issues, so, we'll try again tomorrow and see if it's really up there. But, we're happy to help in any way that we can do that, anything that we can do for the city. Chamber's doing great. I'm here representing. We have lots of stuff coming up in the fall, as always, so, we're kind of gearing up. Summer seems a little bit slow, but we have lots of stuff that we need to do. A lot of businesses that I've seen popped up around the city, so, trying to get out and visit some of those while going to the city and make sure that, you know, they know about the chamber and any help that we can give them. We are here tonight to honor our Business of the Month, which is Serve Daily. The one thing that I can say about Serve Daily is that they've been nominated several times throughout the months and the same thing is always said every time, that they're a great asset to our community and they really try to help our community. So, we're grateful to what they do for our community and we're happy to present this to Chris, so come on up. Chris, do you want to say your words?
Yeah, that's all I can say though. I appreciate whoever nominated Serve Daily and those that voted for Serve Daily to be Business of the Month. Our number one thing we focus on is promoting the good in the community and we recently started a column called "I Was Served." So, if you have, pick up the current paper out there, find the article, and if you were served recently, reach out to Arian and it works double-fold. You can kind of thank the person who served you and also try and inspire others to do good as well. So, as always, just remember to go out there and find someone to serve daily and make a difference in their life and yours. Thanks.
I'd like to add as well, we've had great support from sponsors. We've been one of those sponsors for our Western Heritage Night, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Girls can't help themselves.
Pace and Heights Annexation.
Mayor and City Council, you had approved the Pace and Heights Annexation about a month ago. Since that time, staff has prepared an annexation agreement to include the conditions of staff as well as those conditions that were approved by the mayor and the city council at your meeting. Just a few highlights, just to give you a little bit of background, it is the property. It's about 212 acres of land. Two-thirds of that property is gonna be, is anticipated to be dedicated to Pace and City because it is hillside, it is, it's side of a mountain. And so, the applicant is still wanting to move forward. He has some timelines with the property owner of when he would need to start taking down that property, but we do anticipate that once a purchase is completed and development approval has been granted for the area that can be developed, then he will dedicate that property to Pace and City. Looking at long-term preservation of that land, we want to make sure that either the property's, you know, put it in a conservation easement with a, with an accredited land trust or it's deed restricted, so we don't see development on that in the future and we protect those hill sites from any scarring or any development that may jeopardize the slopes and the drainage systems on that hillside. So, with that, those options are included in the annexation agreement, including just a deed restriction. That was an option that the applicant wanted the city council to include, so we have done that at the applicant's request. The annexation agreement has been forwarded to the applicant for review. I have not heard back from him of whether or not he had any concerns, so I'm taking it as no news, as good news. If, if by some chance we do hear back from him with any proposed changes, we'll bring it back at a future meeting, but tonight, we're just requesting the city council approval as presented.
Any discussion?
I have a question, question for you, Jill. The water tank is on that property, do, is that, we just have a lease or how, how does that work on my water tank?
The property was purchased where the tank is. The property was purchased by Patterson. It was deeded to Pace and City, but when we went to give the building permit for the water tank to be constructed, Utah County notified us that we did, we completed improper division of land. And so, in order to correct that, we had to deed the property back to the Mowers and just have an easement. And so, eventually, we'll own the property again, but right now, it's just an easement for the water tank location and the lines that traverse the property.
So, I'm guessing when we work with Patterson, so they'll get that deed and over to us for the record.
Yes, that is the plan.
Any further discussion?
So, how are we funding the Mount Park? So, we've put a couple of options in there. One was the conservation easement and then the other one just to deed restrict. And so, you know, staff felt comfortable that either one of those options would make sure that it's dedicated to us and that it remains in its current state of perpetuity.
Okay, get some, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve the annexation agreement for the Pace and Heights Annexation.
Okay, have a motion and it's been seconded. Roll call votes starting with Councilwoman Hughes. Motion carries. Going to number two, request by Kevin and Megan Thompson for the, for use of the IO infill overlay to reduce the frontage requirements in the R19 residential zone, a two-lot subdivision at 289 East Utah.
Thank you, Mayor. Simon filling in for Daniel, so I hope I get all the specifics on this project correct and, and if not, Kevin, you correct me. So, I appreciate you being here tonight. But, as Mayor mentioned, there are two requests tonight. The applicant does have to receive approval of the infill overlay zone in order to reduce the lot area of the lot. They, he, well, exceeds the frontage requirement of the R19 zone, but is, is shy of the lot area requirements. So, we do have that tool in the ordinance. It is used for infill development. This is a, you know, a perfect case of infill development. As you look at all of the other lots in the, in the neighborhood, they all have homes on them, they're lived in. A lot of the neighbors in that area have lived there for a long time and so, you know, it's, it's a great neighborhood and we appreciate Kevin's efforts to, to continue enhancing that neighborhood, so it's gonna be a great part of it. But, but we do have the infill overlay zone and then if the city council approves the infill overlay zone, then you can move forward on, on a decision on the proposed extension. So, the area that we're looking at, the subdivision's located on the southwest corner of the intersection of 200, or, yeah, 30 East in Utah. Sorry, that threw me off for a minute. So, there is an existing home on the, on the site. There's, there's also a detached garage. There's also like a carriage house that's located back behind the existing home that's been there. Many of you have probably noticed, this, it's a beautiful site, it's been well-maintained over the years. You know, it's, the design is inspired by Frank Lloyd Wright design. I don't know if he was actually the architect for this, but it was definitely inspired by that. So, anyway, it's, it's a great addition to our community and, and we're excited that the applicant wants to build a, a beautiful home to the south of there as well. This is a zoning, just to show that it is near the commercial zone, but it is located in our 19 residential zone, so there wasn't any concern for the applicant moving forward with the application. So, the, the lot configurations are a little unique and most of that is because of an existing wellspring creek or, or Petee Creek that runs through the property, which has really been as, used as a feature for these, for this property in the past. And so, as, as it shows here, you've got the existing home that's located there on the left and then the applicant's proposing that on lot number two, there would be a new single-family home. As you can see, the existing home, square footage is, well exceeds the requirements, but the garage side of that, or lot number two, is just shy of the 9,000 square foot lot requirement. So, this just shows pictures. So, there on the bottom left is, is the existing home that's there and on the top right just shows the landscape area and that accessory structure that's there that will be removed in order to accommodate the new home. So, the new lot size, as you can see here, just the configuration, there are already some improvements along, along the street. The applicant has demonstrated here that he can still meet our setback requirements, so the only thing that's requested is just the reduction in the lot area and the applicant is able to meet the requirements of all other sections of the total. Just with the infill overlay zone, a lot of the time, because it is an infill tool, we want it to be used as an infill tool, but we don't necessarily want it to be used to make smaller lots than what you would see in the neighborhood. So, this is, this is what Daniel's demonstrating here, that looking at the existing homes in the area, you can see that some of them are even much smaller than what the applicant is proposing. And so, it's definitely gonna fit in well with the other, you know, lot layout in the neighborhood. And then we have some pictures of what a home will look like in a minute. So, these are some of the neighboring homes in the vicinity. So, as you can see, a lot of different architecture, but they're very well-maintained yards, nice architecture, different architecture through the decades, but a very nice neighborhood. The applicant is, is proposing to construct a home on lot number two, something that he will be doing. He's not looking at selling this lot for somebody else to build on. He is wanting to, to build it himself and have a home there. But, you know, so he has identified some features that he would like to see there that he feels it would be very beneficial and complimentary to the homes in the neighborhood, which staff agrees. And so, staff is suggesting to the city council that you include these architectural elements that will be incorporated into, into that home there. But, as you can see, the applicant has some, some grand plans for, for that lot and wants to do something that's very, very nice. I mean, he's gonna own this and he's gonna live in the neighborhood and so, he wants it to be very complimentary and harmony with the neighborhood. So, the approval process, the required approvals, as I mentioned, we have two. We have the infill overlay zone, I know we've got them, you know, opposite, but you still, we have to make a decision on the infill overlay zone first, because if the infill overlay zone is not approved, then you can approve the subdivision. And so, I'm looking at the overlay zone and then looking at preliminary and final plat approval. So, if we could grant both of those tonight, then the applicant wouldn't have to come back to, to another meeting. And then, so public input recommendation, public hearing was conducted at the planning commission meeting. The applicant was able to attend that night. There wasn't any public comment. You know, there was some discussion with the planning commission, but, you know, they were very supportive of the project and recommended approval to the city council. So, as you can see there, you've got your options, appropriate conditions, you know, staff and the planning commission feels that it meets the ordinance and is consistent with the general plan. I mean, definitely looking at some infill development. We do want to promote redevelopment and infill development in our community and this is an ideal application for that. You could remand it back to the planning commissioner, staff, if you felt like there was additional information that you needed, or you could deny it if you felt it wasn't consistent with the general plan. However, the recommendation of staff is that it be approved. We feel that it does advance the, the goals and the policies of the general plan and even the reduction of the lot area would still bring it into as close of compliance with the zoning ordinance as possible. And then finally, the motion should include the findings. So, that is the presentation of staff. The applicant is here. If you have any questions for him, I don't believe he has an official presentation, but if there's any information you need him to share as you're making your decision, he would be happy to come up and, and address the council.
I just want Kevin to know that what he's done to that home, he has beautified it. It was a pretty home before, but you've made it into an even prettier with the painting and everything. I, for years, travel up and down, because I'm right on 30s, and have looked at those odd-colored garage back there.
They painted it.
And, I know. And I thought, oh, and when I saw that you're painted, painted it, now you're gonna tear it down.
Well, it's, it's all metal, so it's actually, anyone else is gonna build it.
Okay, good. But, I really appreciate the way the yard looks and...
Yeah, we'll hopefully continue to do that. Like, by no means, like, some people are like terrorists that want to lose that territory of that home and we don't want it that anyway. That's gonna be our residence for as long as possible. And I do appreciate you noticing that.
Also, I, Mayor Lynn and John Callan never received a letter to come.
Yeah, I chatted with them and they should have received one, I remember feeling it out.
I know.
And he wasn't even there on, because he's on planning.
Yeah.
But I had told, talked to him about it, but, I thought it was funny. I feel like I have 500 of those.
And they said they could figure out how come Grace, oh, never mind.
So, did Grace receive one over on the other corner?
Clear down.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Daniel just gave me a list and then I pulled it out.
Yeah, anyway, and they didn't give one. And they're right across the street, so, but anyway, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I got a couple things. Jill, could you fast forward a couple slides? Keep going, keep going. Right there. Back one. I just have a question on the multiple materials. You have lessies, 10% stone and brick and less than 10% hardy board. So, basically, you have 80% of something else. What are you looking at?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the front of the design, again, I wish we had the design. I want to start with, we had a footprint, but really, most of the, most of what we're looking at, we have a deck with pillars that's, that's pretty consistent with the wall by homes there. And then again, because it's narrow, we have to do a second story. So, yeah, the back and the sides, the texture will be stucco. The front would, would get, would get where the stones probably be in the hard board and the color could be consistent with our house on the north, so we're gonna keep the same color.
Okay. Then Jill, I just wondered how we're coming along with, I know you guys are really busy, but if you had any time to start looking at where you guys could do the subdivisions and approvals of these in life things in, in the house.
We've talked about it a little bit, but we haven't had any progress on making changes.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Not, I'm ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve the IO infill overlay for the Kevin and Megan Thompson subdivision.
I'll second it.
Yeah, a motion being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Because that's the one, the other one needs findings, right? Or both of them?
Both of them.
With, with findings on that, so we gotta vote again, I guess. We said okay, we, we voted, I think we're okay, right? Okay?
We can put in findings.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Does the number three? Number three's connected, so, go ahead.
I'll make a motion and we approve the Plonray plat and final plat for the MK Thompson subdivision plat A located 289 East Utah Avenue with findings.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motions are made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, number four, and this one is mine from what I understand, we would like to put the name of Kim Holland Ray forward for the position of city recorder. Is there any council discussion? If not, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we put in Kim Holland... I'd like to make a motion that we put in Kim Holland Drake as our new city recorder.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made, there's been a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're to the point where we can adjourn, so is there a motion for adjournment?
Hold.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's a record.